I see Aaron. Aaron with us?
That's her.
Yep. Couldn't meet you up. All right, folks, hello, Aaron. We'll start this meeting up since the facilities folks pushed way over in time. So I will try to move expeditiously.
It was intentional.
I believe you. Any public comment, Tricia?
We didn't get anything.
You didn't get it, oh. All right. So I'll prove, I'll move the minutes for approval from October 18th. Eldred, Aaron, you are good with that?
Yes.
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 Thank you for your call, Aaron. Now I can see you. All right. Consent consent agenda, I can talk, I remain here. We've got some I P I funds. South Hill P T A money. Different things, nothing jarring in there. Everybody good with it?
I am. I am.
You're good?
I like money.
Money's good. Got it. Folks with I P I. Okay. So to get to the meat of this meeting. We'll talk. Finance discussion, three plus one investment report.
Alex. Hi, Alex.
Good evening, everybody, how we doing tonight?
Great. Thank you for joining us. And so as you all know, three plus one is essentially our consultant for investments. Alex, I'm wondering if you don't mind, if you could just start really quickly. Eldred had a question at the board meeting on Tuesday about what legally school districts can invest, how can a school districts invest their money? And so could you just frame that and then maybe do your report if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Alex, can I just add context to that? I think I would prefer, I don't know about my colleagues, I would prefer if you also told us the other side of the coin. What are we prevented from investing in, right? Things like vice funds, things like, you know, we know there are funds out there that might give a get a 70%, but we not, we might not be interested in those. So could you talk from both sides of that equation?
Absolutely. So first, thank you everyone for giving us the opportunity here. I appreciate you all being set up for virtual meetings here because I'm in Buffalo, New York, waiting to get buried under six feet of snow this weekend. So this is a nice treat to not have to worry about driving home tonight.
Alex, I'm going to take credit for that one.
You're great, I'll grip.
Sounds good to me. Well, on that investment options conversation, you know, it ties into the investment policy, which is something I'm going to bring up in the presentation here. But as far as New York State school districts, your options are very limited, which is a good thing. The most popular investment option, which is something that the district currently uses to some extent, are U S treasuries. So that is direct obligations of the federal government, debt of the federal government that's guaranteed by the federal government. Beyond that, you're allowed to invest in agencies of the federal government. That's far less common for New York school districts, and it's not something districts currently do it. And then we move towards traditional bank products, C Ds, money market accounts, and products like C Dars, which is something the district does use, which is a type of C D where banks are collateralizing your deposits using F D I C insurance, which again is guaranteed by the federal government. So the common theme that you'll see here for district investments in New York State is, for the most part, guaranteed by the federal government or bank products that are collateralized and protected by bank investments. So that if a bank were to go under, that they have investments in your name so they can sell those investments and get you your cash back. In terms of some investments you cannot use, New York State counties and New York City are allowed to use something called commercial paper. That's the short term debt of large corporations. So they are restricted to use very highly rated corporations. But for example, if you all were a county, you could purchase the debt of Apple or G M or Ford, but that's not allowable for districts. So really, anything outside of what I mentioned, those obligations guaranteed by the federal government and traditional bank products are not allowed. So you'll never see district money or investments in private companies or investment funds with mortgage backed securities and all these other financial terms that you'll hear in the more traditional marketplace. For New York State school districts, it's actually some of the more restrictive laws we see across the country. And it's probably for a good reason because there have been cases in other states where some of those more adventurous investment options didn't always end up so great. But for the district, again, everything you all utilize guaranteed by the federal government or is a traditional bank product that's collateralized with investment options. So your dollars are protected.
Okay, Alex, can I add one little caveat to that? We do have, if you look at the treasurer's report, every month I report our investments. At the very bottom, it does show that there is a General Electric stock shares. Those were donated many, many years ago, left to the district in a trust fund. So that's the only time, well, I just wanted to point that out because it is on there and it goes against what he just said, but that was something that was left to the district in when somebody passed away, they gave that. So we've held it that way in that same way. Stocks that we have in this new trust, it has nothing to do with that.
Straight up after they came.
Eventually it went way down. It's a very, it's a very small amount. It's only $3,400 that we have in that, but it is kept and it is held there.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Amanda, important to bring that up too.
Thanks, I'm good.
Now, would you like me to share my screen?
That'd be great, Alex, thank you.
Okay, are you all able to see the slideshow now?
We are.
Yep.
Perfect. So I always want to start with just a quick refresher on who we are at three plus one and Cash Fest. To Amanda's point, we are kind of like a consultant or a data provider, is what we like to call ourselves on banking and cash management investment decisions for school districts and public entities around the country. So we're not a bank or an investment advisor. We don't take any of the district's cash into our own products. We simply want to provide data to Amanda, Emily, and the team so that they can make their own decisions while working with local partners in your area and other investment professionals that can help you all at the district take advantage of current opportunities in the marketplace. And this is where we've seen significant changes over the past eight to 10 months. Obviously, I'm sure you all are well aware of economic conditions going on and inflation and how big that has become for our world and cash management. That's been one of the positive outcomes of inflation, I would say. And that the cash the district holds this year is far more valuable than it was last year. So you're going to be generating significantly more interest earnings to help offset some of those rising costs from inflation through cash management and investing with this higher interest rate environment. Even with your banking partners, I know Emily and Amanda can remember last year and the year before that when rates were so low and all the federal funding came through. Most banks didn't want the district's cash. We were contacting 10 to 15 different banks across New York State, and there might have been three or four that were saying they would take some deposits from the district. We're in a far different place today than we were at that point in time. So some of the data that I'm going to show you here can hopefully illustrate what that opportunity looks like for the district this year and what it might look like next year. But I definitely don't want to prognosticate too far out into the future here. This is an example of some of the data that we share with Amanda, Emily, and the team. What you're seeing here is a graph that shows all district balances in bank accounts and investments over the past three years. So that small purple line you see represents two years ago and where those balances were throughout the year. The yellow line is last year and the green line is the most recent 12 months, which goes from November of 2021 to the end of October 2022. So all of this is updated as of the end of last month. As you can see, the district follows a very similar pattern, very cyclical, and that's something we like because it's predictable and that can help with cash management decisions. But I do want to note that the graph you're seeing on this slide is from all accounts, including the capital accounts. So a big portion of this is going to be tied to how much you all have borrowed and how much you have spent out on your projects. Whereas this next slide is your operating accounts where we separated out capital and just tried to isolate those true operating accounts separate from your borrowing. Still very predictable and cyclical cash flow. And you're in a very similar spot this year to where you've been in prior years. As I know Emily mentioned, you are a little bit lower here in the summer months than you were in prior years, but things still worked out. And now by the end of October, you're actually in a very similar spot to where you were last year. So I think there's a very good chance that things will continue throughout the rest of this school year now that tax collection has picked up. And you're going to have your traditional higher cash period from November all the way out to some big bills in May and June for B O Cs and your summer teacher's payment. But this is just a quick example of some of that data that we want to provide to help the district make investment decisions and identify the different banking products based on how long cash is available for. This is that same graph showing the same data, but in this situation, we're splitting it out by the different banking institutions that the district keeps its cash investments with. So I always like to show this to highlight all the different partners in the community that you all are working with and all the work that Emily and Amanda and their team do working with these different individuals. Right now, the district is using different investment products with Tompkins than they are with Five Star Bank and Schimunk Canal Trust and J P Morgan Chase. So right in line with those investment options in the investment policy, different banks have different offerings. And Emily has been doing a great job this year in particular during October and early November, reaching out to those banks, asking what their rates are for different periods of time. Because if we can lock cash up for six months, you're going to get a different rate than if you can only lock it up for three months or one month. And right now, the district is again diversifying the cash investments that they're using, which is considered a G F O A best practice. Government Finance Officers of America considers diversifying as much as you can on maturity and the partners that you're using. And the district has been doing that extremely well to this point. Just in the past month, I know the district has taken out treasuries with Chase, traditional C Ds and C Dars, which are a special type of C D with different collateralization.
Thanks for providing that acronym. Oh, if I can interrupt or ask a question, I like the acronym. The G F O back best practice is different for us, oh, I'll look at the screen. It's different for us over the last four or five years. Because we were initially only investing with Tompkins Financial. And do you have any data to share or can pull data to share how that has benefited us, diversifying in that way as compared to the previous 100 plus years in this organization? Because I sit at the table with the CEOs of some of these institutions who've had questions about our G F O best practice. So I would love to be able to say or speak to how that has benefited us. That make sense?
Absolutely, and I definitely could pull some data for you on that. Just to give perspective, for three plus one, we're an independent third party. We don't play favorites with banks because we're not a bank ourself. I like Tompkins as much as I like Chase, as much as I like Five Star. But what we do is provide data so you can see how they can compare. And what we have seen from Tompkins over the years is that they're not typically the most competitive in terms of deposit rates and investment rates. So that's why the district has fared very well by changing up that strategy and not keeping everything with with Tompkins over the past few years. Now, if they change their tune and they start offering more competitive rates and they match what other banks are able to do, then absolutely, I think the district would see more dollars flow to Tompkins. And I know Emily and I are always giving Tompkins a chance to match what these other banks are doing, but in many cases, they've just decided that they can't keep up and choose not to. So it really.
Any particular bank, all right, or any particular person? I just was talking about the diversification.
I think it's safe.
Absolutely.
It's safe to say, we all know why trust is in that financial institution state. Let's leave it at that.
And I mean, overall, even seeing NILAF, this orange color you see here, NILAF's interest rates were very, very low during COVID, but during a rising rate environment like we're in right now, they become one of the better, if not best, short term products available for New York school districts. So over the past 12 months, sorry, go ahead.
Alex, could you explain NILAF and when three plus one took on the district, right, to support us with our data? We were utilizing NILAF almost solely. We also didn't have an in-house treasurer at the time. We were utilizing the B O Cs Treasury Service, which is, you know, a little more difficult to manage when they're at a different location and there's a lot of movement, Emily makes a lot of movement. So NILAF and NYCLASS, Alex, can you just talk a little bit about those versus of the more traditional banking institutions for school districts?
Absolutely. So NILAF, New York Class, and New York Muni Trust are three, what we call local government investment pools in New York State. To Amanda's point, they are not a bank. So I always like to make that clear because they might seem like a bank, but when you're investing with those entities, you're not putting money into a bank account. What NILAF does for the district and for other districts around the state is called cooperative investing. So Ithaca C S D puts in, say, $5 million into NILAF and 10 or 20 other school districts all put their money into NILAF. And then the team at NILAF takes all of that money together and they're purchasing short term fixed income investments, similar to what the district is already doing with C Ds and treasuries. But for NILAF, they're doing it on a very short term basis. So they're buying 14 day investments and 30 day investments and 45 day investments instead of six month or one year investments. Because they're giving the district one account with complete access to the funds at all times. So if the district puts $10 million in NILAF today, they can take that $10 million out tomorrow. It's completely liquid, which offers a great tool for the district's short term cash. The flip side of that is the interest rate in NILAF can change every single day. There's nothing guaranteed. So that's a little bit different than what the district will do on the fixed income side for C Ds and treasuries. I have some examples in the next couple of slides where in the past month, Emily has purchased a few six month C Ds or six month treasuries. And when you do that, you know exactly what interest rate you're getting for the entire six months. You can guarantee that interest and you can budget for it. So there is definitely value to locking in that certainty on some of your longer term dollars. But there's always going to be short term dollars that we know we might need in the near future. And NILAF, in the current interest rate environment, is a very competitive product for those short term dollars, especially as we see interest rates go up. Any other questions on NILAF or cooperative investing?
So, well, a question about cooperative investment, is there an actual agreement in place that we've partnered with these other entities?
So a number, a number of years ago, we brought a resolution to the board to be able to have that as an opportunity for us. And so unless the board revokes that, that's, you know, sort of on the books. And then at your annual meeting every time in July, right? We actually list all of the opportunities for us for investing and they, that is the list. And we continue to update that with Alex as any new entities come on board. And that's also what we took to policy too, right? We actually eliminated out of the policy the names of actual banks so that we could set those at a board meeting, but you know, allowed for sort of just the, the regulations of how we utilize that from a policy standpoint versus specificity of the institutions themselves.
Very good point, Amanda, and that's a great question because that, there is a very long official legal document. I think it's called the municipal cooperative agreement that every entity that signs up for NILAF, for New York Muni Trust or New York Class, they sign and they agree to be a part of this cooperative of local governments across the entire state. And like I mentioned before, how New York State counties are able to invest in some things that you all are not at local school districts. New York State counties have their own separate pool because NILAF and New York Class will use different investments just for counties than they will for you all. So you can be sure that in your NILAF product, they're only using investments that are allowable for school districts in New York. Here's another example of some data that we provide to the district. This is a short term forecast looking out to the future. So every other graphic showed so far is looking at the previous 12 months. This is actually looking at the next six months and predicting in this green line where the district's operating balances are likely to go in the next six months to help with some short term investment decision making. Currently, the district has about $53 million in fixed income investments. So you can imagine everything under that $53 million mark is invested in C Ds or T bills where you know exactly how much interest you're going to get and you know that that cash is not available in bank accounts. That's a number that I'm very comfortable with and it's my job to convince Emily and Amanda to be comfortable with because based on last year, at no point in time did the district go under about $65 million in balances all the way out till the end of May. And most of your investments are set to mature in April and some also in February. So this process is all about ensuring the district has access to cash when it's needed but is earning as much as they possibly can when that cash is not needed. Now, that's the the overall goal of cash management. And that's what our goal is in providing this data to the district. In terms of the outlook, what this means for the district this budget year, the $53 million that I mentioned is already being invested in fixed rate investments. Is going to bring over $1 million in interest to the district just on those investments alone. And that again is guaranteed interest. Those rates can't change regardless of what happens in the economy. On top of that, between now and the end of the year, the district conservatively is going to likely have about $22 million on average. And those balances are going to be able to be placed in NILAF, potentially some short term C Ds and money market accounts at different banks. And very conservatively, based on current rates, I think it's reasonable to assume that there's going to be another $300,000 or more coming from that cash as well. This is a far cry from where we were last year. And really, I'd be willing to bet it's going to set records for the district in the past 10 to 15 years because we haven't seen interest rates this high since 2005 or 2006. So again, I know there are so many things that inflation and rising costs can hurt for the district, including rising borrowing costs. But it's our job to take advantage of what we can control in this situation. And that's earning as much as we possibly can on that cash that we do hold. I wanted to finish up with the investment policy update just to let you all know that that's one thing we help Amanda and Emily with. If there are any questions that you all have on the investment policy as that moves through the process. I highlighted some of the areas that we recommended. Just get a second look for some updates. I want to make it clear that there's nothing the district is currently doing that would be outside New York State guidelines or New York State laws. But the policy just could use a refresher and get some updates. Specifically, one thing that Amanda already mentioned, the designation of depositories or banks, given the district the flexibility to quickly take advantage of new investment products or bank products. If there's a bank that's very competitive that you haven't worked with before, but it's completely allowable under New York State law. There's a section on the collateralization of deposits that could be updated to more closely meet current New York State law. Collateralization is just what the bank is doing to protect your deposits. So again, if the bank were ever to go under, they have investments in your name that they can sell to get you your cash back because they know it's taxpayer dollars. Your section on permitted investments could be updated to more closely meet state law. But again, everything the district is currently doing is within state law. So it's not something you need to be overly concerned about right now. And Appendix A in your policy is tied to the collateralization section. And that's just a list of those investments that a bank can hold in your name. And that that list could be updated to meet more current state guidelines as well. But overall, at three plus one, we recommend reviewing these policies at least every other year. And we'll always keep the district up to date if there are changes in state guidelines. For example, I mentioned New York State counties a couple of times. They received updates to their state investment rules about two years ago. So I know that cities, towns, and school districts saw that this happened for counties. And there's a chance that could happen for you all at some point. I don't think it's necessarily on the horizon right now, but that's the type of item that we'd want to make sure the district is aware of and that policy gets up to date if something like that does happen. Any questions on the investment policy or our process here as a whole?
Alex, I just wanted to speak to policy. It is later on in the agenda. There were really, the policy committee was very appreciative of the work that you did to update that policy for us, specifically the, the, uh, the procedures regarding the investment, which is a quite lengthy document. I want to tell you that Pat Wazalu read that policy word for word in the meeting to go through it thoroughly and really actually enjoyed the experience of learning about the way that we manage this, so thank you for that. And so later on, it's just very specific. It's essentially, and this one, Alex, I am going to just, Chris, I'm sorry, I'm going to go a little ahead in the agenda. Really, the one thing that policy asked us to check was Section 7, which was under Authorized Financial Institutions and Dealers. It essentially just says that the chief operations officer, there's some lead into this, but the sentence that they wanted to check on was that the chief operations officer may use their discretion in selecting any allowable bank under New York general municipal law for investment purposes only, up to a limit of $20 million per bank, unless otherwise noted in this policy. So that was just that threshold, Alex, that I'm glad you're here. That was the question, I think, that policy wanted to make sure finance felt good about. Do you have any reservations on that that came from the policy you shared with us, so?
From my perspective, that's something we've seen other entities in New York State adopt in their policies. Again, just to give the finance office that flexibility to quickly take advantage of an opportunity at a bank that they haven't worked with before, provided that the bank is allowable under New York State law and the investment type is allowable under New York State law. And we try to make it very clear, this would be only for investment purposes. We don't think it's necessarily prudent for the district to move operating accounts and transactions to a brand new bank on one week's notice. But sometimes in the investment space, there's a bank that will have a one week C D special and they'll have a really great rate that could bring thousands of dollars to the district above what your current bank has. But if you have to wait a couple of weeks or a month to update a policy to get this bank added, that can get in the way of your ability to take advantage of that because things can change so quickly, rate marketplace. So from our perspective, we just try to make it clear, this is only for those non-operating investment dollars that are available and there's a limit to it. And we definitely think it would be appropriate for the board to be updated at the very next meeting once that has been taken advantage of, if the opportunity presents itself.
Yeah, Allison, that is the next sentence of that portion of the policy. So it goes on to say, a report of such investments must be provided to the school board at the subsequent finance committee meeting so that this bank can be added to the depository list as needed. At the subsequent finance committee meeting so that this bank can be added to the depository list as needed.
I personally, I love that language. You know, it's easy to have the state guidelines met, but those procedures around everything, like you mentioned, Emma, Amanda. Are very important because we want to know who's doing what. Are there internal controls and some double checking going on? And specifically, when you're choosing banking partners, that's very important. Those are some of your most important financial partners and technological partners. So we want there to be transparency around it. But specifically on that investment side, that's where we try to push for just a little bit more flexibility. As long as everyone's clear and on the same page that we're talking about. Banks that are allowable in New York State and investment types that are allowable in your policy.
So has our, have our auditors reviewed the changes that we are requesting or proposing? To this policy or what happens? Because this is, this is about internal controls too.
This wouldn't fall under audit because we're within, it's a change in the language for the policy. And they pretty much, and then correct me if I'm wrong. Brought it up to twenty twenty two language, but we're still, everything in here is within the limitation and guidelines.
Of the general municipal law.
Municipal law, so we haven't gone outside of that at all.
But with regards to us naming banks and Alex said we need a little more flexibility for investment purposes, not to name the banks.
Because you'd be limited in that language to that specific bank.
So what we do at the annual meeting, Karen, is we try to, you know, we try to capture every banking institution that we possibly would use, right? So this would happen, what would be added at the subsequent meeting is if that bank wasn't on the depository list, right? And also we would report of our investments, which we do anyway, on our treasurer's report. So this, this is allowable by law. This would not be written up on an audit report. It's based on policies that are all over New York State that school districts use. And that this would then catch us up essentially to allow us by policy be able to do that. So I, I mean, Alex, I don't know if you want to speak to how auditors look at these things, but. I, I know that looking at other policies, that this is very common language, and we're just bringing ourselves up to a really current time. As opposed to where this in, whenever this was done, I think it was nineteen ninety seven. The institutions were listed within a board policy or procedures. Yeah, I know, it was actually part of the, the policy, so.
And Alex had recommended that this specific policy be updated every other year.
Correct, yes, and that would be our plan. Great.
Any comments, Alex, on that?
I think, just want to make it clear on that every other year, I like to use the word review. Because we don't typically see so many changes where you all are going to have to worry about, as big of an update you're doing right now every other year. But that list of designated depositories is something that is considered a best practice. But we just don't want it to get in the way of you being able to take advantage of other opportunities too. So it's great to have that list on the side and make sure everyone's up to date, who you're working with. But not keeping that list so limited that you can't go outside of it to other New York State allowable banks. And that was particularly more meaningful during COVID, like I mentioned earlier, where there were many banks that just didn't want cash. And it was getting kind of tough to find places to put cash. So that, that's really what I think it's kind of a fail safe for those times.
So, so who signs off on like if these different investment vehicles and then we start, we have like ten. Investment companies and then we change it to eight or nine or something, whatever it may be. Who signs off, it says the chief, it'll, well, it'll change from chief fiscal officer to chief operated officer.
So that's, so that's my title, right? But what I, what I would like to get in the practice of with Alex is for the annual meetings, ensuring that we have a comprehensive list. Of potential investment vehicles, banks and or N I L A F, N I class, right? So that it's approved by board resolution, then that's a board resolution. And then if that needs to be modified through board resolution, that would be modified, that's how, versus it being in policy.
Okay.
And, and I will say, we've taken a look at that pretty carefully in the past to make sure there are no ill perceived conflicts in that list. So yeah, that's, that's on us.
And it's not only once a year that we may sign off on it.
No.
It could happen.
This would hold me accountable the next month, right? So if a new institution were to come into play, right? And it wasn't on our list from the July meeting, this would then add that the immediate next meeting.
Okay.
Good question.
Oh, I went to the finance training November fair.
I love it, we could talk anytime.
Anything you'd like to add, Alex?
I think we covered it all. Always like to thank Amanda and Emily for their partnership. Obviously, as you all know, I can't carry out actions for the district. My role is just to provide data and hopefully make their decisions easier. And anytime you all have questions about why something was done. Or if there's the controller's office stopping by for a cash management audit, you should be very confident that you have a great team. And a lot of data backing you up to show very clearly why cash management decisions were made. And why district deposits are being put in different places. And that's all that those entities are looking for. It's all about transparency at that point.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I think we.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Alex.
Good luck.
Thank you, I'm, I'm getting my shovels ready.
So next we go to another upstate New York community, Ben Duzlona. Not so far west as Buffalo, from Fiscal Advisors. And so we've invited Ben to join, and we thought it was a really good night to do this actually at the same time, because now you thought about the investment piece. But this is now about capital project borrowing. And there's a whole set of rules around borrowing and that money. And whether or not, or how much, or what portion you can utilize to get advised by Alex, right? Due to arbitrage, so Ben's going to explain a little bit of that. And then also go into some upcoming thinking about as we're building and we're growing and we're moving forward in our phases with capital project. We're going to need to borrow again, and this current fiscal climate, what are the options for us, right? In terms of being able to get the, the funding for those future phases, so thanks, Ben.
A pleasure to be here and thank you for the introduction. And let me see, make sure I can share my screen. Everybody see that?
Sure can.
Okay, great. Yeah, so just to let you know, I'm about fifteen miles south of where the snow belt is hitting. Oswego County right now, so all the school districts north of me were canceled, but roads were fine here today, so. Just want, so I'll cover, as Amanda mentioned, kind of two, two different things. The first being the capital projects, borrowing and investing of that money and just some limitations we have there. And then I'll get into some financing and my thoughts on that as well. So the big thing with in regards to borrowing for capital projects is arbitrage. And essentially what that means is that you're going to take borrowed monies. Which are voter authorized monies and turn around and invest them. And kind of it's kind of a historical piece of the puzzle. When I first started, which is about twenty three, twenty four years ago. You could take five million dollars, borrow it at five percent. Turn right around and invest it at seven percent for a year and make a million dollars in interest earnings. And as long as you met some certain thresholds, that was absolutely the methodology that a lot of school districts took part in. And a lot of them, especially smaller schools, were able to save percentages of their levy just by doing that methodology. But the bottom line is, I think, the bullet point on the last, this first, first slide is, is important. All arbitrage profits, unless you meet certain thresholds, must be remitted to the federal government. So the federal government does not like you to take borrowed money and turn around and invest it past certain thresholds. Surprise, I know. So a couple of arbitrage rules for school districts. There's a big exemption, which is called a small issuer exemption. If you borrow less than ten million dollars in a calendar year, the federal government pretty much does not look at you. They don't really, doesn't register on their radar, for lack of a better term. And that was small issuer exemption, and I probably should have gotten prepared for this. I don't know the year that that exemption went in, I'm assuming it was nineteen eighty six. But the bottom line is those rules and regulations haven't changed in many years. Kind of like the state education department doesn't make changes to a hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project. So these things tend to stay in place for a very, very long period of time. Rebate if the district does owe anything, those earnings do go to the IRS. Now, the, the most important piece, I think, that relates to the capital project that the district is currently undertaking and past projects are the spend down tests. So essentially, if you pay those percentages within the timelines that are outlined below. You've met the spend down requirements, you're spending the funds fast enough. You can maximize interest earnings within those limitations. In the last couple of years, we've typically, and I'll just use twenty million dollars as kind of the benchmark. So as long as we were spent two million dollars within six months, nine million dollars within twelve, fifteen million within eighteen. And nineteen million dollars within twenty four months. The, you've met your spend down requirements and you're not going to owe anything back to the IRS. And there's also a certain, just to note, there are certain forms, IRS Form eighty thirty H E, which I do not prepare, bond council prepares that. But there are certain boxes you can check there. You can actually check a box that says we'll pay a penalty. I checked with your bond counsel, he has never, never recommended selecting that. You, you automatically pay a penalty. And the reason being, in the last twenty years, there's been no need to because, in a nutshell. The borrowing rate has actually been higher than, than the investment rate. So there's really no, no chance of owing anything back to the government. Recommendations and looking at your capital projects. My always recommendation is to maximize what you can, but still meeting those spend down requirements. So if your construction cash flow tells me that you're going to need twenty million dollars in the next year. Or eighteen months for construction, that's what I would recommend we borrow. Would not recommend borrowing any more than that, you know, for a couple of reasons. Number one is your investment rates are still below borrowing rates. So even though we may be able to invest now at, let's say, three and a half percent, you're going to borrow at four percent. So you're still losing half a percent. There's no net gain to borrowing more than you need at this point in time. Another bullet point, as far as why I think we borrow, kind of what the construction cash flow dictates. Is that any sort of borrowing adds debt service to your budget. With the district's last passage of the hundred twenty million dollar referendum. There were stipulations in there that, that suggested. The debt service overall for the district would not exceed seven percent of the budget. So if we were to say go out and borrow sixty or seventy million dollars in June, July of next year. That would essentially break that threshold. So I think that the plan that we've had in place, which is an annual, if not semi-annual, review of capital projects. Which ones are going to be approved at the state? How quickly is the money being spent in conjunction with your construction manager? We've developed a really good plan of attack as far as how much are we going to need to get us through a construction cycle. One of the things that has been very interesting, and I just touch on this, is in the last. I would say in the last really fifteen years, interest rates have been so artificially low. That it would be more expensive for you to, let's say, borrow various different times during the year. So in the last few years, we've only borrowed at one point in time. We borrowed in June or July of every single fiscal year. As rates start to increase, you know, we'll take a look at the cash flow in more detail. And recommendation maybe to, if we need twenty million dollars in the next twelve months. My recommendation may be, let's borrow ten million now, see how far that stretches us. And then borrow another ten million when we need to. And the rationale being that if we're paying four percent on interest expense, if we have, you know, ten million dollars sitting in the bank. And it's only receiving three or three and a quarter percent interest rate, it may actually be more prudent and more beneficial to just go out and borrow twice. But it's something that was not even a consideration twelve months ago. And it really wasn't a consideration for the past ten years before that. But now it's something that we're going to take a definitely a harder look at as we plan our next financings for the district. I'll pause there for a second, if there's any questions.
We're all good here, Ben, thanks.
So typically, as I mentioned, in June and July is when we undertake our, our annual financings. So as part of the hundred twenty million dollar referendum. I will say that we, we had a detailed discussion, it was two years ago. And we decided that we would bond out phase one of the project. And I can tell you, sitting here today, that was a very, very wise decision and very of the, of the finance committee. And at Amanda's charge, because the interest rate on the bonds we sold at that time was sub two percent. And I could sit here and safely say that we will not hit that level again in the near future. So it was good to bond out that money at, at that time. As far as looking.
And you said we avoided about a couple million, right? It was significant.
Right, I did an analysis for actually when I came to the district about a month ago. And if we had waited only, if we had waited twelve more months and financed at a later date, we would have actually paid about two million dollars in additional interest expense over the life of the bond. So it was very advantageous with our, our planning. So, so conversations like this and the communication I have with Amanda at her office is, it's kind of, is. I would say it's priceless, but I guess we could put a price on it of around two million dollars. I caught the tail end of your conversation with the construction manager and I saw the architect was in the room. And I, just to, we've had communication with them as well. So as we look forward to, what are we going to do in June, July, two thousand twenty three, a big consideration is building aid. Because my recommendations usually center around when will the aid flow? Because we don't want to have a situation where we have debt service, high debt service on a bond. And we don't have any aid coming back in to supplement that. So in our analysis and with discussions with the construction manager. Feel that phases two A and possibly two B, but most likely two A can be bonded out in two thousand and twenty three. The building aid will flow on that in two thousand twenty three, twenty four and be fifteen years starting in twenty three, twenty four. So we would issue a bond in conjunction with that aid flow so that we have a match of debt and aid. Currently, we have a ban outstanding, so a short term financing outstanding for just under twenty four million dollars. In my recommendation, we'll finalize this and tweak it a hair, but would be to bond approximately twenty five million dollars. Which would account for the phase two A construction. And then we would take a close look at the analysis of construction cash flow. What would be needed from July of two thousand twenty three through July of two thousand and twenty four? Or, as I mentioned earlier, we would look at maybe what's needed from July of two thousand and twenty three through December of two thousand twenty three. And issue a ban for that amount and then reevaluate in December of two thousand and twenty three. So we'll take a look at it, but we want to really look at what, what do we think we're going to need to fund your construction capital needs? In a twelve month period, and I know campus construction will be getting that documentation to us. I would probably say, you know, in early two thousand and twenty three, so we can plan accordingly.
Hey, Ben, when you talk about getting aid also with the project. What, what kind of eight percent end dollars are we looking at for twenty twenty three?
You're gonna, you're trying to steal my thunder, that's in the next couple of.
Don't, don't answer that.
But I will tell you that the, the building aid ratio of the district is currently fifty eight point eight percent. So it's in that the aid ratio for twenty three, twenty four should be released within the next month or two. Generally, it's in the November timeframe, but they haven't released it yet. Before I get into kind of the numbers piece of it, I, I just want to go through, there's a couple of. Kind of as Alex mentioned for their investment options for districts. There's very few long term options for how districts finance capital projects as well. So we have two options really, we have open market bonds or DASV bonds. And I, I'm just going to touch on this and, but please stop me with any questions. But essentially, there's four interest rates that play into which method is going to be the best bang for your buck. So in the open market. You have to sell bonds on the competitive bond market and. whatever rate is available, the best rate that we can get on that day, that's what we capture for the district. Currently, I looked at municipal bond index before putting this together. I ballparked it at three point seven one percent as of today. So I would refine these numbers prior to, obviously, budget, permanent budgeting and things of that nature, but as of today, it's three point seven one. But the key component that is going to kind of drive a recommendation on my part is going to be the second interest rate, which is the assumed interest rate, which is one point five zero percent. So what that basically means is that all of your phase two A projects, the state assigns an interest rate to those projects, not based on today, not based on when you were going to go to bond. It's based on when the project receives state education department approval. So those projects have a one point five zero percent interest rate for calculation of building aid. So no matter what you sell your bonds at, if you sell your bonds at two percent, they calculate it at one and a half. If you sell your bonds at ten percent, it'll be a one and a half percent, and that's in the open market. Going down to the bottom half of the page, what about DASD? What's that mean? Well, DASD is a pooled financing program developed by New York State, which is done once a year. And it's where it'll take districts of all shapes and sizes and bond ratings throughout New York State. And it develops them into series of bonds and does a giant pool of financing. I want to say last year's pool was about sixty districts. The total power amount of bonds was about seven hundred million. So you get some economies of scale with the higher dollar amounts. But the two interest rates at play with a DASD financing are similar to open market bonds, but there's a little bit of a tweak. So in a pooled financing, generally, what we see is you will pay a little bit of a higher interest rate. And for my number run, which I'll show you in a second, I assumed a four point one five percent interest rate. But the other interest rate is, again, that aid, aid interest rate. So in a DASD financing, the aid used to calculate your building aid, or sorry, the rate used to calculate your building aid is a combination of not only your short-term interest rates, your ban interest rates, but also are blended together with the actual interest rate on the bonds, the DASD bonds issued. So for my example, your interest rate, and this is, I believe, I'm estimating on the low side. If these were the actual numbers, this would probably be a three sixty or three seventy. But the interest rate used to calculate your aid jumps from one and a half percent to a three point four percent. So you're actually going to get more building aid. So now the analysis turns to does the more building aid, does that outweigh the increased interest rate of a four point one five percent bond versus a three point seven one percent bond? And what I did here is I put together a very, very, I'd say, rough estimate of just that scenario, and hopefully everyone-
Ben, can you blow that up for us by any chance? And also, Ben, just to be clear, that DASD bonds, like other bonds, can be refinanced. If, right, they can be refinanced in the future if there's a better rate.
Correct. So in DASD bonds have a typical call feature. So all municipal bonds have a call feature, and it's roughly eight years. And I say roughly because you can push the envelope on that and try to go for a shorter call feature. But the problem is that New York State municipal bonds have a pretty standard eight-year call. So if I estimate in the open market, you can get a three point seven one, but you say, well, I want a five-year call, then you might be paying a three ninety or four percent. So you pay for that option, in other words.
And we have not, oh, I'm sorry, Elton.
Before we get into the slide, a quick question. So we pool our funds statewide. I'm assuming that means that we also share profits and any loss is proportional to our investment in that pool. Correct?
You do, but in most in most instances, and I'll use this one as an example, remember, phase two A is already going to be paid out. So essentially, you're just long-term financing, but there's no actual cash sitting there because that money's technically already been spent on the construction of phase two projects. All of your other money that is for ongoing capital projects that you actually need, that is going to stay at the district and will stay within the district's control. So this is just permanently financing money that's already been spent.
And Ben, we, we as a district have not considered DASD in the past because it hasn't behooved us, because the mark, it hasn't looked like this, correct, in terms of market?
Correct. So the reason when I DASD becomes beneficial, well, it becomes beneficial for a couple of reasons. Number one is if you have a really high building aid ratio. So you have a fifty-eight point eight percent aid ratio, which is good, but it's not the ninety or ninety-five percent that a lot of your neighboring districts have. For those districts, because building aid is such a larger component, it always makes sense in ninety-five percent of the situations to use DASD. So you're on, you were on the cusp in the past because the assumed interest rate was, say, one and a half or one and three quarters percent, and you could sell bonds at two percent or two point one percent. So you could be very close to what the assumed interest rate was. When the spread between the assumed interest rate and the actual interest rate widens, that's when DASD becomes more of a consideration. And I always say a consideration because markets change, right? In six months, this could be very much a different scenario. But right now, I think this is a pretty, pretty good picture of where we sit. What I did here is based on kind of the interest rates I went over on the prior page, I did a two-side analysis. So in column two, I said, what happens if we issue twenty-five million dollars of bonds at a three point seven one percent interest rate in the open market? And that's represented under column two, about two point two million dollars of debt service per year. That same scenario, open market bonds, your aid is calculated at a one point five zero percent assumed interest rate. So even though we sold that at three point seven one, your building aid is coming in as if you sold that at one point five oh percent. And that generates about a million sixty-eight thousand dollars of inter, I'm sorry, of state aid per year. And then the difference between columns two and three is the net local share open market, which is about one million one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year represented in column four. Second half of the page, same financing dollar amount, twenty-five million dollars, long-term. But I use the different set of interest rates. A four point one five percent bond rate on DASD. So we're going to be paying instead of two point two million dollars of debt per year, about two point two seven million dollars of debt per year. There's the key one. The interest, though, interest rate used to calculate your building aid now jumps from one and a half to three point four oh, giving you about one point two four eight million dollars of building aid per year. So a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more in building aid per year for a net local share of about one million twenty-five thousand dollars per year. The difference between columns four and seven is about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars per year. So as I sit here today, I can say with pretty certainty based on the market conditions that by permanently financing twenty-five million dollars of bonds through DASD, you'd reap a net benefit to the district of around a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, which is fairly significant. And Amanda may remember that when I met with her about a month ago, this was more like ninety-five thousand dollars a year.
Right, right.
So the theme there is that as the Fed continues to raise interest rates and as inflation and interest rates just in general are rising, the benefit of DASD actually becomes higher. Because the main reason is that one and a half percent interest rate that the state assumes you can sell your debt at, that doesn't move. So that's the only factor in everything that doesn't move. The interest rate on open market bonds moves, the interest rate on DASD bonds move, and the blended interest rate, if you were to issue DASD bonds for your building aid moves, but that one and a half percent is a fixed interest rate that will not change.
And that's why we want to do this today. So nobody was afraid. We came to you, you know, coming up, thinking about this, right? When we mentioned DASD, and we said, we've never done that before. There, this is the reasons why. So we really wanted to just sort of get that thinking going, so we felt and build our comfort with this idea. And again, you're bringing in that revenue from building aid, which would offset, right, what you're going to be paying with that interest rate.
I just say that we were I'm used to big numbers in my career, big numbers, and so aren't some other people on the board. But again, need to shout J True, Brad Granger, and Rob Ainsley for sort of taking us to the next level and really helping us become comfortable with this kind of we used to call playing at the casino, right? We used to talk to our financial advisors about how much comfort we had with interest rates and risk and which way to go. So now it's baked into the system, but it's important to note that it wasn't always, right? We had to learn this, we had to learn to play this game. And now after two consecutive hundred million dollar bonds, we aren't afraid anymore. You know, Amanda's got her back. So just wanted to put that out there. This isn't like natural learning. You don't even go to school to learn this stuff. This is, this is, it's stuff you have to learn the hard way sometimes.
Ben, you were going to say something?
I was, and now I lost my train of thought. No, I actually remember now. And another thing I was going to say is that a lot of in the past, I think that the, one of, one of the reasons some of the higher rated school districts that I worked with, and higher rated, I mean, higher bond rated, they would want to avoid DASD is because they, you know, it has that, sometimes it has that stigma that why are you going to the state for permanent financing? We're a double A credit, we can do it on our own. So I think some of that is gone, but I will say the district is a very highly rated double A. And if we do go through the DASD, you don't get blended in with A-rated or B-double-A-rated communities. You would be rated in with the Webster's out of Rochester, the Brighton's out of Rochester, the Liverpool's out of central New York. So other other districts that are also using this financing tool that share a common high credit rating as yourself. And you would be lumped in with those others, not others that have a bad credit rating. I sometimes would pick on a client of mine, I won't name it, but they used to be on, they'd go through the DASD pool. They would have to be their own series of bonds because their credit rating was so bad. We wouldn't be lumped in with that. So just some other, you know, in planning, what I plan to do is continue to monitor the market and keep the district abreast of where we are. In early two thousand twenty-three, I generally will have a firmer plan in place, which is right around the corner, which is hard to believe. But I'll have a very good plan in place. And one thing, should we do, should we choose and should DASD be the method that is most advantageous? We start that process very early in two thousand and twenty-three just because of the lead time of working with that authority. But during the course of the process, if we get to April or May, and that no longer is the prudent way to keep going, we can yank you out of that pool and we can do it on our own. So although we'll start the process early, if it still makes sense, we can, we always have the ability to pivot on a dime and pull out and go on our own. So I just want to mention that. And then we'll work with the construction manager to refine how much cash the district will need to go through the summer of two thousand and twenty-three and fall two thousand twenty-three construction.
And Ben's got, I think, his back because like me, we both went to college, although different hills, we went to college here locally, so. Yeah.
That's true.
And we'll get a copy of this?
Yep, I can, Amanda, I found a spelling error earlier, so I'll correct, I corrected my spelling error and I'll send this off to you.
Thank you so much.
I always help you, I always have at least one spelling error. My numbers are always good, but I always have at least one spelling error in my first one.
Questions? Thank you so much, and hopefully you don't get much snow.
Appreciate it. The snow blower's ready, though, so I'm ready. All right. Take care, everybody. Have a good night.
All right. So then we'll-
Super quick last agenda item, Chris.
Yes, we've got the budget transfer.
It's, that's it, because really Alex covered the other one.
Yeah.
And so essentially, what we're just asking is that instead of three thousand dollar limit for transfers, that we would have ten thousand dollar and then any transfers which exceed ten thousand dollars, the amount appropriated by the board for that line item, from which the transfers may must be approved by the board and advance the transfer. So we're just moving the threshold up. Again, remember, we're down with a hundred and fifty million, ten thousand. It's really still very small, but we feel like that's a big leap from three thousand. So that would give us a lot of opportunity to be able to, to help building principals and, you know, department leaders be able to make transfers as necessary within their budget for their daily operations.
And notes will be on the consent agenda.
Absolutely. You would, again, report that.
Through them anyway.
Yep, we would report that out in the following board meeting. It just allows us a little bit more authority.
Yes, although he didn't say it, I think it bears repeating. One of the reasons why this board has consistently, over the last decade or so, been so intentional about keeping our credit rating high and being just a wee responsible is because seventy percent of our budget comes from our neighbors. I'm not going to assume the district he was talking about with the terrible credit is the opposite, right? Where they get most of their money from the state. I'm not going to assume that because everything, that would be mean. But my grandfather used to say, I'm too old a cat to be called a kitten.
So and those policies will go to the full board for discussion. They're going, I mean, the transfer one's already pretty much been vetted out through policy and it makes sense.
They just wanted to make sure you were okay with those number changes. And then that twenty million, that was the other, right? That was essentially new, to be able to have that threshold. And again, that's just bringing it up to general municipal law allowances.
Just nice, talking about twenty million, a hundred million. I like it, some of that.
I can't answer that. All right. Topics for next meeting?
Emily, Emily's going to shine with some benefits, employee benefits and retiree benefits in terms of the fiscal lens, right? So we'll go through ERS, TRS, workers' comp, health insurance, dental, vision. Did I miss other benefits or things that are?
I don't think so.
I think that's it. That's what we're doing.
Talking about future developments?
Because you got that one for December that I think, when did we see we're going to say we're going to do our joint HR?
Oh, well, I mean, it would be great if it's next month because it's benefits, which is, you know, we, we have the money pieces and we track that, but really the the benefits management, minus Emily's work with health insurance, really is function of HR, right?
Yeah.
Can I propose that in January, whenever our first our first meeting at the new year is, that we try and have some calculations about how much we're spending on professional development and all of our academic priorities, literacy, learning forward. It's, I think it's time for the community to wrap their heads around how much this is actually, what an investment this is for the system.
But also trend it to see where we started and where we've gone.
Yeah, and what they think, the projections.
And that will, we'll have Mary and Lily at the table for that.
Yep. DCIS, PBIS, macrium soup, I mean, all these things have a cost.
We'll also start some budget.
We do, we start presentations, yeah, on that. On that meeting as well. But we can modify, Chris. We can always make modifications in the meeting.
That one's usually the overview of how the budget comes together and you know, what numbers are starting to line up.
Give me calendars, sort of like what, what's what.
All right. Anything else? All right. Well, to get folks home in a timely manner, I will say this meeting is hereby ended. Thank you all for hanging out with us, and if I don't see you, please have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We'll see you, Chris. My mom and I will be there. Yeah, like we do every year.